Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Cholo City Council to order. But we're going to do an audible roll call tonight. We have some of our council people are with us telephonically, so I'll call your name if you'll just give a roll call here. Councilmember Clark?
I'm here, Mayor.
Councilmember Leach?
Here.
Councilmember Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Kokavas?
Here.
Vice Mayor?
Here.
Councilmember Hatch? Councilmember Hatch?
Okay.
Okay, and myself. So, we have a quorum tonight. We'd like to welcome our public that is not here tonight, but we want to welcome those that are at home tonight viewing on YouTube or City 56 or streaming. So, we're grateful for the city staff being able to set this meeting up and being able to have it and still being able to do it. You'll see that you can call in if you have any questions concerning tonight's meeting. There'll be a phone number that you can call and we will answer the questions that you may have. So, we'd like to begin this night with an invocation. I've asked the Vice Mayor if he'd lead us in a prayer, after which I will give the Pledge of Allegiance. Those that'd like to please stand and join with us.
For Heavenly Father, we just thank you for the great weather that we've been having here lately, and we just ask that you continue to bless this White Mountain area with the city of Cholo and this Navajo County. Or we just ask that your hand comes on this virus and that we can get over this and get back to some hyper enormacy. But we just ask that you, your grace and your mercy just comes down on this and your hand protect the people of Cholo and residents of Navajo County. We just ask that you protect all the people, it's essential service people out there that's doing the frontline stuff. We just ask that you continue to protect them so they can't get the virus and that they can do the stuff that needs to be done. We just ask that you continue to bless the people that's overseas, our own forces and at home. We just ask you bless them and keep them healthy. That's just your name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
I'd like to give just a little bit of an update of where we stand as of today in relation to the COVID-19 virus. In Navajo County, we have 485 confirmed cases in Navajo County. Cases that are off tribal lands are 82. And we have had in Navajo County 11 deaths. In the state of Arizona, there's 5,251 cases with 208 deaths. One of the things to mention here, over the last five days, we have held pretty constant in a kind of a curve at the top. It's peaked up and we're starting to see almost a flat line starting to happen. So with that, that's good activity as far as it's a positive measure that we're able to measure by. I know the weather's changing. I know a lot of people are anxious to get out and to be doing things. We have had updated conversations regularly with the governor, and there is a plan that's in place to start working towards easing some of the restrictions. And as those come from the governor, we will follow suit. And so I just encourage citizens to continue being patient a little bit longer. I know that what we've done is trying and it's tested everybody, but I just want to thank you for your support and for what you're doing to keep safe. And I know there's a lot of places, businesses that are anxious to get open, and there's been a lot of businesses that are still open and remained open. And we want to thank our responders and thank those people in the medical field. And tonight, we're going to give a little tribute to them at the end of the pro and the end of the council meeting tonight. So, at this time, we'll go through the agenda that we have. We have a call to the public. Is there any citizen that's called in or has something they'd like to share? Tamara, did you receive any emails?
No, I did not.
Okay. Justin, did you receive any calls? This time, we're not aware of anybody who's called in.
Mayor, this is Justin. We have not received any calls at this point.
Okay, thank you, Justin. First item we have is the consent calendar. On the consent calendar, we have a proclamation of April 20th as Fair Housing Month. We have a proclamation of Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Cholo, April 2020. We have a proclamation from April 12th through the 18th for Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. We have a proclamation of making April 24th Arbor Day in the city of Cholo. We have a consideration of a non-commercial ground lease with BTNJ1 Property Management, a consideration of Resolution 2020-05 authorizing and submitting grant applications for federal land access program for reconstruction of Joe Tank Road, and also with the United States Forest Service boundary. We have a consideration of Resolution 2020-06 approving submitting application 2020 build grant program for Scott Ranch Road and the bridge project. We have a consideration of Resolution 2020-07 appointing a accounting manager as applicant, as applicant, applicant, sorry, agent for public assistance during COVID-19. And we have consideration of a contract for carpet cleaning services of the city of Cholo, and the consideration of the minutes for the Cholo City Council meeting of March 17. Does anybody have any items they want discussed or reviewed there? Not. Okay, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilmember Leach. Is there a second?
Yeah. Second.
Second by Councilwoman Kokavas. Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. At this time, I just want to read one of the proclamations here. We're so grateful for our Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Although this was last week, we want to recognize their their great efforts and what they do. It says, "Whereas thousands of dedicated Public Safety telecommunications personnel daily serve the citizens of the United States and our community by answering the telephone calls for police, fire, and emergency medical services, and dispatching the appropriate assistance as quickly as possible. And whereas the critical functions performed by these professional telecommunications also include those related to other government divisions, Public Safety Telecommunication Services, and whereas professional Public Safety Telecommunicators work to improve the emergency response capabilities of these communication systems through their leadership and participation in training programs and other activities provided by professional organizations and learning institutions. And whereas the American Public Safety Telecommunicators daily service the public in countless ways without recognition by the beneficiaries of their services. Now therefore, I derrail Seymour Mayor on behalf of the Cholo City Council, do here probably proclaim last week, April 12th through the 18th as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And we encourage all citizens and public safety personnel to join in honoring and recognizing the Public Safety Telecommunicators of the Cholo Police Department and throughout the nation, and the vital contributions they make to the safety and well-being of our citizens dated the 21st of April." You know, I think when you take a phone call and you never know what's going to happen on the other end, but you have a pretty good idea that when that call is made, that is there's a purpose behind it, and somebody usually needs help. And I just want to appreciate what they do and the countless hours and the stress that they work through. And I know there've been a lot of questions and a lot of things, a lot of call for services. As we have stayed home, we have seen some uptick in calls for services. And I just want to appreciate all of our public safety and also the telecommunications for the great job they do here in the city of Cholo, and thank them very much. This time, we have next on the agenda, we have items 7A and B. It's a public hearing. Public hearing and consideration of applicants submitted by Kim Kenneth Kawakowski on behalf of the Circle K store number 9526 or number nine liquor store license here. And so at this time, we'll open this up for, does anybody have any questions before we go to public hearing?
Mayor Tamara can present the staff report.
This time, who is? Tamara, do you want to submit your staff report on this? Share that with us.
Mayor, Kim Kenneth Kawakowski, representing Circle K number 9526, submitted an application for a person-location transfer for a number nine liquor liquor store, liquor license for its location at 5250, and that's a correction from what's actually on the staff number. The address is 5250 South White Mountain Road. The property was posted per state law and no public's input was received. The Cholo Police Department conducted a background check on the applicant and other associated individuals and found nothing amiss. Department of Liquor Licenses and Control conducts its own internal investigation for the background check. So based on the investigator's findings and the recommendation of the city council, the State Liquor Board will decide whether to approve or deny the application. Beware that the city council is choosing to recommend denial of the application. The motion must include the reasons for denial. And the applicant is available if we need to call him on the phone.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Is there any questions? This time, I'll open this up for public hearing. There's anybody on the phone or anybody who's called in?
Mayor, this is Justin. We have not received any calls for the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. At this time, seeing nobody's moved on the public hearing, I will close the public hearing and bring this back to council for a motion. Vice Mayor?
I'll go ahead. I'll move to recommend approval of the State Liquor Board of application submitted by Kim Kenneth Kawakowski for the number nine liquor store license on behalf of the Circle K store 9526 and the location of 5404 South White Mountain Road, Cholo.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second it, but isn't the address different than what he just stated?
5250. Oh, yeah, I'll go with that.
Correct that motion. Correct the second.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll call for the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay. Seeing no opposed, this pass seven to zero. Thank you. Next item is item 7C. Consideration of an application submitted by James Edward Gerard on behalf of the White Mountain Base Submarine Veterans for a special event liquor license for 2020 Cruising the Rim Car Show on June 6th at Frontier Fields. Tamara, read here.
Thank you, Mayor. James Edward Gerard, representing the White Mountain Base Submarine Veterans, submitted an application for a special event liquor license for the 2020 Cruising the Rim Car Show at Frontier Field, scheduled for June 6th contingent on their ability to have an event with a large group gathering. The license will allow the submarine veterans to sell alcohol during the event. There is an existing six-foot chain link fence surrounding Frontier Fields where the alcohol will be sold and consumed. Two entrance exit gates will be open for participants to enter and leave the area, which will be manned by the White Mountain Submarine Veterans Personnel to ensure no alcohol is brought in or leaves the premises. Additional submarine veterans will patrol and monitor the area to ensure that there is no underage consumption. The Cholo Police Department performed a background check on the applicant and found nothing that would conclude approval of this special event liquor license. The application and action taken by the council will be forwarded to the Department of Liquor Licenses and Control. Unlike regular liquor license, the council decision is final for such an application.
Thank you.
And Mr. Gerard is available if we need to call him.
Right. Thank you very much. Any discussion on this? Seeing no discussion, I'll look entertain a motion by the council.
I'll go ahead and make a motion, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
I move to approve application submitted by James Edward Gerard in the special event liquor license for the 2020 Cruising the Rim Car Show on June 6th at Frontier Field, Cholo, Arizona.
Thank you. Is there a second?
There's a second here. This is Grant.
Second by Councilmember Hatch. Any other discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Say aye. Aye. See that pass six to one. This time, our next item is item 7D. Consideration of award a construction contract for North 16th Avenue sidewalk and walking path improvement project, city of Cholo project number R1520-A, and approve the associated budget transfer, Mr. Hemosaw.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The city's fiscal year 2020 capital improvements program budget includes $165,000 for a sidewalk connectivity project labeled North 16th Avenue, McNeil to Old Linden Road. The scope of the work includes installing curb gutter, five-foot sidewalk, ADA ramps, driveways, required drainage facilities for the work, and a detached asphalt walking path for North 16th Avenue from McNeil to Old Linden Road. The proposed improvements are located on the west side of 16th Avenue. Project was designed by city engineering staff with a construction estimate of $235,000. The project was originally publicly bid in February, and after 10 contractors attended the pre-bid meeting, no bidder submitted for the work. Comments received ranged from busy schedules, could being a challenging project to bid because it had large amounts of concrete work combined with the asphalt path, increasing the need for more subcontractors. City staff reevaluated project design and modified the bid documents to include additive alternate for construction to entice more bids. The base bid was revised to include concrete sidewalk from along 16th Avenue from McNeil to the north corner of K-Bar RV Park property, and then a detached six-foot concrete sidewalk from K-Bar to Old Linden Road. An additive alternate number one was included to allow the contractor to replace that detached six-foot concrete sidewalk with an eight-foot wide detached asphalt path as an additional option. The work was publicly bid according to statutory requirements with the following results. Hatch Construction, base bid $233,405. Additive alternate number one option, $208,955. McCola Construction, their base bid, $249,447. And their additive alternate option at $241,685. Development Specialists at $289,998. And additive alternate number one option of $280,393. Diceless Engineering, base bid $318,000. No additive alternative option was submitted. Question Utility Contractors at $370,845, and their additive alternate number one option at $354,570. And Service Contracting at $389,930. And the additive alternate number one option was $347,280. Navajo Hatch Construction also submitted a bid. However, they utilized a bid tab from the previous advertisement back in February. It didn't have the additive alternate options, and we were unable to read their bid for this bid opening. After evaluation of the bid submitted, staff decided to award the bid a little better, Hatch Construction, with the additive alternate number one option, which includes the detached sidewalk path for the north portion of the project. Staff has identified savings from the Sierra Vista subdivision roadway construction project to help fund the overage amount to award the project. Staff recommended awarding construction contracts for the North 16th Avenue sidewalk and walking path improvement projects, city of Cholo, number R1520-A. To Hatch Construction in an amount not to exceed the $208,955 and approve the associated budget transfers. The bid tab is included, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hemosaw. I appreciate that. Is there any questions here?
Mayor, I have a question.
Okay. Councilwoman Kokavas?
Shane, if we're not going to do sidewalk and replace that with asphalt, is that supposed to be a temporary fix for that project? It just looks kind of disconnected when there's sidewalks on Old Linden Road and then up on McNeil.
Yes, Councilwoman. Good question. The original scope of the project in CIP was actually a detached asphalt, like walking path the whole way. And just for limited room, kind of with the right of way, with the K-Bar development there and the other houses to the south, a sidewalk just seemed more, maybe it was just fit better in that location. But from that K-Bar location to Old Linden Road, I think you'll see like it's a meandering type walking path, similar to what's off the highways by Torion or by Clark Road. Kind of adds a little aesthetic feature of being detached, removed from the traffic. It is different in the sidewalks, and there would be a little difference there for sure. But that, we tried to leave a little small portion of the original intent of the CIP project moving forward. Thank you.
Let me just clarify here if I can. Shane, our picture shows the the blue and then the red. Is the red kind of the part that's going to be asphalt?
No, actually, the red would be the attached curb gutter and sidewalk, the concrete portion.
All right.
And that blue, that blue portion to the top, where there's a little more room to meander in that.
Okay, I'm looking at it. Okay, yeah, all right. Okay.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. Any other questions, comments?
I have a quick question.
Hey, Councilmember Leach.
Is there any utilities on that side of the road, or where are they located? Are we, I'm sure you guys know. I'm just curious for myself. There's some utilities, mostly in the southern portions of the project, down by Humane and Stratton and those locations. We're avoiding most utility boxes, things along those lines. There is a, there's a mail pullout that needs to be addressed, so we're actually adding a little pullout. So people, when they park, they get to their mailbox, they're off the road. That's something that's added feature there by Stratton. Mostly the power is overhead until you get to Old Linden Road, and water and sewer not in the way at this time. Thank you.
You know, I would like to have you look at this north side of this here, the north end. There's a lot of people that cut through 16th Avenue and go off into that area there, and they'll bring a lot of mud and a lot of debris back onto 16th. And so now, if we're going to put an eight-foot wide asphalt walkway there, I think it just entices more people to drive down that and then use that to turn off going back in. Is it possible that we could put, I don't know, some type of deterrent, whether it be a chain on a swag-type thing down through there that would deter traffic from going from that sidewalk area off into that area that's further west? Because I've looked at a lot of traffic.
Absolutely. And at the beginning of both of the asphalt portions, we could definitely add some boulders. We've done that on the piece over by Summit Trail on the Torion side, so people can drive up on the path. And as far as crossing the path, we did have this discussion. There's a lot of people that cut through there. We've thought about adding boulders or additional construction, even maybe lodge pole fence for majority of the way at some point, if not included at this part of the project. But that could be something that would definitely, you know, leave that be a walking feature and not have people driving over it.
Yeah, I think we need to look at that, you know, because I think that would definitely enhance this project and also, you know, just keep that walkway cleaner and safer for people, you know.
Aye, that's totally right.
All right. I just want to point out that when you make a motion for here, we need to make the motion and as part of the motion, determine, point out that it is the additive alternative number one that we're approving. Okay? Have you seen no other discussion? If anybody else has any? If none, then look for a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion for you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
I move to award construction contract for North 16th Avenue sidewalk and walkpath improvement project, city of Cholo project R1520-A to Hatch Construction in an amount not to exceed $208,955, and approve the associated budget transfers, and that includes alternate number one.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second by Councilmember Leach. Any discussion?
I just have one, Mayor, if you don't mind. Now that you brought that up about the fencing or something, is that something that we're going to need to do with this project? Because if we build it, if we do this asphalt, you know, the next day, they're going to be driving over it.
It's not included in this bid, but I think it's something that would direct staff to look at and see if they can, you know, bring another project right behind this, or at least find some funds to maybe do something that would enhance that. It won't be real costly.
Great. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Good comment.
I mean, if we put in concrete there, would that deter that a little bit versus, you know, the asphalt? Wouldn't it kind of square it up and make it more of a deterrent?
Staff?
Oh, yeah. Driving over a curb or having to jump a curb in certain locations could definitely add a little bit more of a, you know, restriction to get in there. Unfortunately, a lot of the traffic we're seeing going out of there is quads, you know, things along those lines that will jump pretty much anything to go where they need to be, unfortunately.
I guess, I just think that for about $25,000, different. I would prefer concrete there myself. Is there, is there a fund that we could fund it to the $2233,000 level?
City manager, do you want to tackle that one? I'm going to ask Shane, was there any other money left in the Sierra Vista subdivision project?
I do believe there was additional funding in there to handle that, yeah.
So it's really up to the council. If you want to see it all concrete, we can do it all concrete. And we probably still need to put a barrier up because of the vehicles that cross there.
I kind of agree with Councilwoman Kokavas, but the barrier as well. I think it looked nicer. That's a pretty busy road, especially during school. There's kids walking up and down that lunchtime after school, so it's pretty busy.
Vice Mayor?
My question to Shane was, we wouldn't have to change the bid on this if we leave it the way it is and then put the rocks in or the boulders in, because we as a city have enough that stuff laying around somewhere where we can do that, where it's not going to do an add-on on this.
You know, I knew Rick does have some rocks that we can utilize to kind of block the big, the main core or the roads that cut through there. We can, maybe there's a few trees that we'd have to remove if we did the path. They're not very big, but we could maybe also lay them sideways to truck until we could get some sort of lodge pole fencing or something that definitely delineates that walking path away from any traffic crossing that. The nice thing about a walking path is you remove further away from traffic, you're a little safer. You're off the roadway, you're not on a sidewalk, but it, but it does not have a curb. They'd have to go down, drive up, drive over the top of it. But I think there is things that that public workers can do to block that in the interim until we can permanently put something there.
And I guess if we chose to just go ahead with the base, with the base bid instead of the additive bid, then that would include concrete the entire way, correct?
That's correct. There would just be, there would be this curb gutter and sidewalk. It would be kept at that five feet, and it would go down to Old Linden Road. That is correct.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I apologize. I'm sorry, I'm reading this. No, actually, that's not correct. Let me, let me jump back there real quick. The, remember, the base bid was to have the sidewalk in the same location as the path, but just detached. This material is going to be concrete.
So concrete or asphalt, it's still a detached path? It's a detached path, but it would be whether we do it in concrete or do it in asphalt's the only difference there.
We, I apologize. We did consider just going attached sidewalk the whole way, but when we actually did this, the two options were the base bid, concrete the whole way, but the detached sidewalk for the top portion, and then the additive alternate number one, which was the detached asphalt and attached concrete below that.
Mayor, this is Gene.
Yeah, Councilmember Kelly?
Yeah, I would like to say if
Yeah, I would like to say, if staff has evaluated this and put in the time and the hours and been on the scene and looked at it, uh, and this is their recommendation, I, I don't want to go against the wishes of other council members, but I would like to just postpone this thing and have a decent study session on it, not spontaneously change their recommendation, and maybe you wish we hadn't. I, I, I don't know which way I want to go right now, but I know they can be very effective with the boulders, even up to and including the quads and that. Um, you can walk through something between boulders quite handily. Uh, I, I just, I, I hate to see a spontaneous change in staff recommendation without a decent study session, and I want to go out there and walk it if, if, if we're not going to do what's been recommended.
Well, I think the only difference, if we don't do what was recommended, the only difference is, is we're, we're putting, uh, concrete down instead of asphalt. The project will look basically the same, instead of having an eight foot asphalt, you'll have a six foot concrete. So the difference is, is whether or not we want to spend $25,000 more to get a forty, I don't know, call it a thirty, forty year life of an concrete versus a twenty year life of asphalt.
Right. And Mayor, may I add more thing? Um, and maybe Morgan can help me with this. The, you know, the bid, the base bid does include just installing, um, curb gutter sidewalk attached to the roadway. Um, the quantity, it would need to be extended if you wanted to keep that attached to the roadway. Um, and once you go over 20% of increasing a line item, amount, they have the right to renegotiate if they'd like, or they might just leave the cost the same. Um, but that does trigger a, a, and a chance for negotiation. Otherwise, there is the work in the scope of the base bid to attach that and build it that way with contractors.
I think what the council was talking about is leave it detached, but make it concrete, Shane.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the detached because that goes with some of the detached that we already have, but I do like the fact that if we start part of this in concrete and it's going to tie into concrete, it would make sense to have concrete in the middle.
I, I totally agree.
I do too.
My question then is, do we have a bid that we can rely on if we make this change?
Yes, it, it was, the base bid would be the concrete bid, Councilman Kelly.
That's correct.
We're still going with the same scope that, that, uh, staff has already looked at, and we appreciate staff trying to get this closer to what the capital improvements program budget, which was 165, but if we've had some savings from another project and it's still in part of our capital improvements and they're doing the work, it just makes sense to maybe complete it all the same.
Mayor, would you want me to change my, uh?
Well, we do have a motion and we have a second. The only way we can change that is either take a vote or ask the motion makers to rescind their, their motion. Is that correct, uh, attorney?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So if the second would like to rescind his second and the motion maker would like to make a new motion, we could do that.
It's been so long, I don't know who made the second. If it was me, I'll rescind my second.
It was you, yes.
Okay, and as a motion maker, I'll go ahead and change it back to, um, I move to award the construction contract for the North 16th Avenue sidewalk and walk, uh, path improvement projects, City of Sholo, R-1520A to hatch construction in amount not to exceed 233,405, and that would be for the base bid and move the associate transfer, extra transfer.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it again.
I have a second. Okay, any other discussion?
I just have already stated, I think this is bad business, um, for procedure reasons only. Um, therefore I anticipate a negative vote.
Any other discussion?
Mayor, I would just say the, uh, is calling up on Councilman Kelly, the city, the staff was just trying to make it be a cheaper project, like you said, to comply with what the capital improvements program said, and concrete or asphalt, it, it's up to the council on that and we're fine with either one.
I, I don't think we're undercutting staff's recommendation or staff's design here because at all, because they, they've given us an alternative and, and it's, and it's kind of was our choice to choose, so with that.
No, and I also agree with about, uh, having it away from that road, because there is a lot of people, a lot of foot traffic along there, so I do like that. Of course, and plus making it narrower with the sidewalk, uh, the cement compared to the asphalt is a great deterrent, too.
Any other discussion? Thank you. Don't I call for the vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Do that pass six to one. Thank you. Thank you, Shane. Appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you, guys.
Next item that we have tonight. Is item, uh, summary of current events here. I've looked at council members, uh, for summary of current events. I guess the best is I'll just start down, down the roll. If you have something, uh, just say, Councilmember Clark?
I don't have anything at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Leach?
Yeah, I have something, um, just kind of an update. I was, I was asked by the city to be part of an ambassador program to call all of our businesses in Sholo, and I, I was, uh, fortunate enough to have 80 of them to call, and I think I made contact with probably at least 70 of them, maybe 75 of them, and I can tell you, that was one of the most awesome things that I've done as a councilman. It was, it was nice to talk to these people. I'd love to do it face to face, but it was, it was awesome to talk to a lot of these businesses during this COVID-19 crisis and, and I can tell you that people were so thankful that we would reach out as a city, um, just to see how they were doing, you know, what, if the city was doing okay for them, if we should be doing something different. Um, but it was awesome. I mean, I, I, we had five questions we'd ask people, these businesses, and, and I, I never asked one because I just started a conversation with them and during, usually it would be a 30-minute conversation, we just got into talking, and because I knew a lot of them, but I can tell you that it, it was, the reaction was phenomenal. Um, people just absolutely praised, um, the city for doing this, and, and I'm sure the other ones did as well, the other people that called, but I, one that really touched me, I called, um, I finished up yesterday, um, but I called a, a gentleman, I think he's from Prescott or Prescott Valley, but he owns like eight or nine Jack in the Boxes in Northern Arizona, and he just made the comment that he wished all of his Jack in, Jack in the Boxes were in Sholo, and I said, oh, um, why is that? And he just said that, that he's bought the Jack in the Boxes, which he bought right after the Chedus guy fired. He said, between city staff and the people in this community, the Sholo, he couldn't praise us enough, and him and his wife, um, she was actually with him on this call, because he called me back, and she said the same thing. She goes, she just, they're going to retire him. They just absolutely love the community, praised us for doing, making these phone calls, um, to check on our businesses and just, I mean, it was, it gave me goosebumps. So it was awesome. I told, um, Steve, uh, Steve North, that I, I would continue on this program because it was, like I said, it was the most heart-failing thing that I've done as a councilman in the last 10 years. So it, it was just awesome to, to listen to these businesses and praise us for calling them. It was, it was phenomenal.
Thank you. And I appreciate you doing that and being on part of that committee. It, it's, I've heard nothing but good from it and so many people have expressed that, and we appreciate the people who worked so hard to do that, too.
And, and if I can, Mayor, just real quick, just add to that just a little bit, they, a, a lot of the, the companies that we call as businesses in Sholo, we called, of course, they'd say, oh, well, we get a lot of emails from the chamber and we get this and that, and, and I said, well, this isn't a chamber deal, it's, it's just the city reaching out to your businesses and, and that just added more excitement to them. They just couldn't believe what we were doing, so I'm excited to continue this. I, I'm, I can't wait till we can get out and I want to go, go face to face and, and just talk to a lot of these businesses. It's a great program.
Thank you. Councilmember Kelly?
Uh, just encouraging everyone to help their neighbors, uh, pray for one another and just be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kelly. Councilwoman Kukavas?
Uh, just report on the COVID a little bit. Summit Healthcare has, uh, 10 cases in its system. We have zero patients in the, in the hospital with COVID. Everybody's at home and on quarantine, so, um, we've had about four employees that have been, uh, tested positive.
We appreciate that.
At the, um, city last Wednesday, we saw the community or healthcare providers, it was a wonderful event, um, and hope you all were able to make it, but it was really heartwarming to see everybody being supportive of their healthcare providers.
Thank you. We appreciate that and we're thankful for what Summit has done in our community and everyone. Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just want to let everybody know, I, uh, attended a, a Main Street meeting, we did a telephonic, really because of everything going with the COVID-19, but, uh, if, if you had a chance to look down at the corner of Ninth Street and the Deuce Clubs, that's a, the newest Main Street, uh, project that we've done. It's got some great, uh, uh, lettering on the wall there. Uh, we're going to try to enhance that with more, with lights, and also we're going to be planting some more bushes and shrubs and also some trees there and make that corner really nice. So, uh, if you, if you like what you're seeing, please, uh, let the people on Main Street know what, uh, uh, that to keep on going in the way they're going, because they thought that was a great project and they're looking for some other projects to do. Also, this week I got with Meals on Wheels, I just see how they're doing. They're doing really good right now. Uh, they're serving all their, uh, seniors with breakfasts and for lunch and, or dinner, and then on, they're doing them for seven days a week. So on Friday, uh, they did, they deliver them their meal and then they give them two frozen meals, so they have something for the weekend. Uh, so, uh, they're doing really great there, and so I just want to put a, a shout out for everybody that's donated or, uh, money or time delivery for, uh, Meals on Wheels. Uh, it's a great thing, so I'll, I'll, I'll put a big shout out for Horn Subaru. Uh, you've probably seen in the newspaper today, they noted, donated a check for $5,525, $5,525 to the Meals on Wheels program. So, uh, thank you for, uh, all your help from Horn Chevrolet and, uh, Horn Subaru. Um, just want to talk a little bit about the people with the essential service we've seen on TV and we've seen here in, in the City of Sholo and everything else with the, uh, hospital and the nurses and the doctors and, uh, everything else, police departments. Um, just want to give a shout out for other essential services that is, has not been, uh, talked about or even thought about maybe, but that's, uh, the, uh, cable TVs and the gas companies and the, uh, electric companies, phone companies. They're keeping all your internets up and keeping things going. They were going to people's houses and doing installations. Um, they touch a lot of people during the daytime, uh, more than a lot of people think they touch, and so the good thing is, uh, like with Frontier, uh, we have 25 employees to touch about, uh, five to six houses a day, so, uh, and out of that, uh, without having the, the correct PPE right away, even though everything was ordered, we made our own mask and we, uh, hand sanitizers and everything else, and, um, just thank God that nobody in Frontier is, is came down with the COVID-19 and they're still doing their, their work out there in the field, so thanks for all those other ones that don't get recognized very much, and I know there's, I'm probably leaving a bunch of them out that, that, uh, I still see needs to be recognized. But, uh, my last thing is, I, I just want to give a big thanks to, um, the mayor of Sholo, Darryl Seymour. He's not only doing the things he needs to do for the city, but he's also doing the things he needs to do for the county, for being the county board of supervisors. I've assisted him in some phone calls on the, uh, to the governors. Uh, I keep in touch with him to find out, uh, if there's anything I could do, because when you're working both shifts as a county board supervisor and mayor, your phone just seems like it never quits ringing, so, um, I just wanted to thank you for your time, your service, uh, that you're putting in for this county and for the City of Sholo, when, uh, you could pass a lot of this off to somebody else and you didn't do it, and so I just want to thank you for your, um, leadership.
Thank you. Councilmember Hatch?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Uh, this is a comment that I would like to pass on to Councilman Leach. I really appreciate what you've done on behalf of the, uh, city council with the Chamber of Commerce and the, uh, different members of the community that you've contacted. That's great. Uh, good to hear. I get the coaches right along with you for that. Uh, and I have another comment that I'd like to pass along to, uh, Councilwoman Kukavas. Uh, honey, not a week goes by that I don't get a call from the people at the Cardiac Recovery Organization, uh, following up with me, uh, since we had to abbreviate my, uh, therapy sessions with, uh, COVID-19. If you would please pass on my, uh, congratulations to them for a job well done, and, uh, I know they really care for the people that they care for. Thank you.
I'm happy to do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. You bet, John.
You know, we just appreciate each of you council members and for your hard work. Uh, everybody's been, been so busy and, and been so gracious and, and done so much. Yeah, I received a phone call the other, other afternoon, was kind of, was interesting, uh, and it, it happened to be, uh, the county manager, and he, he, he said, well, I thought I'd wait and call all the other, uh, mayors around, and then he said, I kind of have a relationship with the, the mayor of, of Sholo, so I'm going to ask you, can you turn your city blue? What can you do to turn your city blue? And because he, he was quarantined for some time, he hadn't been out, and I said, our city's already blue, you need to come out and take a look. And I just want to thank our staff for years ago, having the forethought of, of having different colors that we can turn as a city, and to be able, for not a whole lot of effort, to be able to comply with, uh, what that means in our community when we do turn our community blue and we think of other people and we recognize those people who were there. And our condolences to our, our people up north who on the reservation has suffered greatly, who have had deaths, as well as our tribal members to the south of us. You know, we come together as an entire community, as an entire city and as an entire county, and I just want to thank the citizens who live in Sholo, thank the people who, who try to build people up, who try to do good at times and recognize that we all have weaknesses, we all have faults, but we're all human. And I just want to thank, uh, everyone on the council and the staff in the City of Sholo and the citizens for what you've done during this time. They're not a better city to be part of, and I thank you very much. This time, we'll turn the time to our city manager for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a little bit to report here, the city's next free excess trash collection service is scheduled for the week of May 4th through May 7th. The service available through to all City of Sholo refuse customers is provided by Waste Management with our contract. It's on your regularly scheduled collection day during the first week of the odd-numbered months. Items must be bagged, boxed or bundled and weigh less than 50 pounds and placed next to your poly cart by 7:00 AM on the regular trash collection day. I want to emphasize that sometimes we get, um, neighborhoods that'll put bags out for weeks before, but they really need to be put out the night before or the, by 7:00 AM the day of your collection day. Large items such as refrigerators, freezers and mattresses cannot be accepted through the excess trash collection. Now, the, we had, the XX Trash Collection should not be confused with the 22nd Annual Project Clean, Clean Sweep, which kicks off in mid-May, so right after that first week of excess trash, Sholo residents can dump green waste for free for two weeks at Dirty Deeds Green Waste at 890 Cinder Pit Road from Monday, May 11th to Saturday, May 16th, and again from Monday, May 18th to Saturday, May 23rd, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And that's for your green waste going to, um, Dirty Deeds. And other services for the project Clean Sweep will take place in June. We've, there'll be a flyer in your next month's utility bill that, um, will We've, there'll be a flyer in your next month's utility bill that will explain more information on the Project Clean Sweep. Now, we want to talk about census a little bit. As you know, the 2020 census is underway, and over 50% of households across America have responded to date. The rate of response from residents living in Cholo, however, is 32%, significantly lower than the national response rate. We want to remind our residents that census population figures determine how much each city will receive in annual state and federal monies to fund community programs and services. Every resident who is counted equals more shared revenues, which are used to build and maintain roads, water, sewer services, recreational facilities and parks, and funds the police, senior centers, schools, daycare centers, et cetera. This is the first time in the U.S. Census Bureau that they have provided online forms for electronic cemental. Individuals who choose not to participate in the online version of the census will be visited later by a census worker. However, because of the COVID-19 outbreak, the U.S. Census Bureau is adjusting the census operations to protect the health and safety of the American public and the Census Bureau employees. Field collection data was temporarily suspended in March, and steps are being taken to reactivate the field offices beginning June 1st. Remember, participating in the census is an easy way for you to benefit our community for the next 10 years, and if you need any more information or explanation on the census, you can contact our Planning and Zoning Director, Justin Tregaskas, at 928-532-4041. And finally, we were notified today that beginning tomorrow, the U.S. Forest Service Southwestern Region has enacted a campfire ban in the, in all their national forests in the southwest, Apache, Sitgreaves, Coquandino, Coronado, Cuyahoga, Prescott, and Tonal. Igniting, building, maintaining, attending, or using a fire will be prohibited on all six of the national forests in Arizona until June 30th, 2020. If you have any questions on that notification that came out, you can contact the Southwest Region Office at 505-842-3292. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate it. This time we have a special tribute we'd like to play.
Hi, I'm Joe Shelley, Cholo Police Department Chief of Police. I'm here just to do a shout out to all the nurses and doctors and all the other people that work at the hospitals. So, last Wednesday, when we were showing our appreciation with the men and women that work at our Summit Healthcare Hospital, several representatives from different agencies were there. Sheriff David Klaus with the Navajo County Sheriff's Office, Chief McCluskey of Hebrew Over Guard Fire Department, Brian Savage with the Timber Mesa Fire Department, and several other agencies, not to mention Snowflake Taylor, Pine Top Lakeside. I just want to take this moment to thank you all for everything that you've done for us and continue to do. Take care and stay safe out there.
Like to thank Melon and its crew here for Cholo City 56 for doing that, and also for our police department. We appreciate that. At this time, we have scheduling of meetings. Are there any other meetings we need to schedule?
No.
Seen no other business at this time. I'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you for watching tonight.
See y'all later.
Thanks, guys.